Calling meeting one thousand six hundred and forty of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee to order at six oh three Thursday, January fifth. Happy New Year to all. I hope people had some time to have some relaxation. I want to go over a few things before we begin that came out partially as a result of our last meeting. And one of the things relates to the owl. The owl cannot move and pick up things as quickly as we like. So if you look at the video of our meeting, it it doesn't serve the public very well. The few things that we have to be mindful of, one, as much as I hate it, we I have to insist that we follow my recognition of you for speaking and that everybody be very careful of not stepping on anyone else and we can't have any, now that I checked the time when we shut this off, we can't have any cross conversation. The other thing that came up is, and Carl, you will correct me or if you if I am wrong. We can't be in a position where if there is a break at any point, if people are standing on the side without being aware of it, we could be breaking open meeting law because you could very easily, if you're discussing a topic on the agenda, have three people from a subcommittee. So we have to be completely cognizant. If you're standing on the side, talk about your kids, talk about skiing, talk about the weather, whatever. But there can't be any discussion of what we're we are discussing here. Next, or maybe for those people who are new, during public comments, we do not respond. So if somebody makes comment, a suggestion or whatever, the only thing that I will do is say, we'll take it under advisement, we will consider it, but we do not engage in any dialogue in terms of a public comment. The other is, I may have to cut people short in terms of their comments because we have an unbelievably packed agenda. We have our consultant related to transportation here who is going to take us through that humongous report that we received. And if anybody was able to digest all of it, more power to you. So my hope is that we will be able to move along expeditiously and first asking for a motion for the approval of our last school committee of meeting, well, the meeting of sixteen thirty eight of December one.
So moved.
Wait, 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 let me just get a second and then I need more than half.
Second.
Okay, so that's Carl, please.
I just have a very brief question about your, the reason why there is, why there should not be, I'm not saying I disagree, I just want to know what the reason that it should not be a response to public comments.
It has been always a practice everywhere that that how is how it is done. We do not engage in dialogues. So if you look at any school committee meeting, I can cite the policy, but the policy is you take the information and you then will proceed to act on it.
You know, I know that, but I'd be interested in if anybody here noticed that the reason for it.
Yeah, I I do not know what the ruling is. When I came on years ago and then every school committee meeting in the area that I've watched, everybody follows the identical pattern.
Is an established practice. Okay. Right, but not all established, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I like us to go on. It is what is done all over. If you watch any school committee meeting, you take the information and then it's our job to follow up. All right.
May I offer?
Absolutely.
My understanding is that the school committee meeting is the business of the school committee. So public comment is for, you know, inputting consideration, but not necessarily place where you would be having a back and forth dialogue. That is typically my public comment, my understanding, years ago.
So would it be correct to say that a response to public comment where the commenter says, and I I've been looking for an answer to this question for a year and I haven't heard anything. Can any member of the school committee answer me? And the answer is no, we cannot.
Yeah, it will be, the response will come from me and that it will be put, I apologize for that. But I promise you, it will be brought to the attention of the individuals who can handle it. And that is the way we've handled it, that's the way all the districts handle it. We do not engage. And Beth is right in here again, is that it's not part of the actual meeting, though the only things they can speak to are items on the agenda. But I will find out.
Well, it's certainly.
I promise you.
Okay, it's certainly a, one of, must be one of the reasons that there's a disconnect between government and the populace.
Carl, I'd love to hear this, but we're really under time constraint. Thank you. Do we have any comments in terms of the minutes? Any corrections? Yes, Nancy?
I'd like to see Julie and Sandy's names added to Director of Curriculum and Director of Student Services. That's me, it's not critical, but they're not.
So under administration, they're listed. Where are you asking?
At number ten. Number ten in minutes.
Yes.
Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development Report.
So put the individual's name.
I think so.
Okay.
I mean, we usually do, so it was a standout that they went there.
Okay, done.
But that's it.
That's it. And under number nine, the superintendent, Dr. That's a Are there any further? Are there any further corrections at all? Okay, seeing none, let me take a vote on that. Nancy?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes?
Yes.
David?
Kyle?
Yes.
Carl? And yes. This, all right, so that's uniformly, all right. Enrollment. Okay, thank you very much for the detailed work on that. Do we have, I love, you know, to look at, not only are we holding our own, we're up over the year. And it's interesting, just as a very quick question per name, the number of out of state, are they just like neighboring states or people have moved? You know, we don't know.
Where people move, I'm not sure I know this.
Okay.
Section, but yeah, I am not sure, but when it does.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on our enrollment? All right, Beth, anything you want to say regarding that?
No, I just like the direction it's going.
Me too, me too. Okay. Miscellaneous correspondence.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to, I asked to have this included in your packet. I received this email notice from Doug Selwyn of Greenfield, who has put this.
If you look, that's two C in your packet.
Who has wants to organize, he's a member of Franklin County and is looking in Western Mass to organize people who might want to talk about rural issues and funding. And so I thought I would put this in there and see if anybody from the committee would be interested. His email is there, they're in the organizational phase and you know, they're going to be pursuing funding options as are we in an advocacy type of way. So I just wanted to include this for anybody who might be interested.
A question here, did anyone join from MASC, the Rural Subcommittee? You did, great. And I put in as well. So good, hopefully we'll have some representation. Dennis, how does this come at all in conflict in any way with the Berkshire County, where you're the Vice Chair of the Berkshire County?
You're, you're.
MASC.
Had me totally confused.
And aren't you the Vice Chair of District Six?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this in no way is in conflict with any of that.
I don't think so, no.
Okay, is there anyone, I know we haven't had a time to go through this document that Beth just received. If you are interested and you happen to sign up, I I plan to, especially after hearing the new governor's pledge to the western part of the state today. I plan to send an email. So if anybody else does, please let me know. And just at one side, Nancy and I were in both in attendance remotely when there was gathering with our legislators and it really, you know, we've got to organize and do that. David?
In terms of content of letter, what sort of time commitment would we be talking about for anyone who agreed to do this?
I don't think they've stated, I think that's why he's just trying to garn, see if there's any interest from anybody out here to participate. That's why I personally am recommending that, you know, you reach out to him and ask maybe what that would look like. I I have no idea.
And this is up?
Yes, Nancy.
And this is outside of Division Six.
Yes.
Oh, no, he's just.
Okay, anything else with this particular?
Yes.
Okay, great, moving on. Do we have a student representative report?
Yes.
Hello, Jessica. Can we see you?
What was that?
We see you and hear you.
Sorry about that, that was my dog.
We love dogs. Or at least some of us do. You're muted again.
Probably getting rid of the dog. Sorry, my dog was barking.
Okay, so can we see you as well? All right, if not, let's just move ahead with your report. Unmute yourself again.
Yeah, sorry about that, my dog. Yeah, so I do have an update. So with the senior luncheon, we had, it was held in December. It had the several members of NHS and then some core students as well. And then we also had culinary and the help from other high schoolers as well. And then following that, we had the NHS helping decorate the Sheffield Historical Society. I think we were there for, you know, most of the morning and we had our own NHS tree as like a thank you from them. And then the senior class had the Krispy Kreme fundraiser and I believe we made about, I think, five hundred or so dollars from that. And then following that, NHS also had their teacher appreciation, which several of us came together and created cookies and or made cookies with thank you cards on them and then just place them around the school. And then I believe they were also given to the New Marlboro schools over there as well. We accounted for the staff and faculty over there. And then I know that next week, the senior class is having a meeting to discuss our senior trip and also our senior shirts. And I think that's the update that I have for now.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have a question for Jessica? Okay, Jessica, thank you so much. And really, as someone involved with the Historical Society in Sheffield, we really appreciate all of your participation. Keep it up.
Thank you, thank you. Have a good night.
You as well. Okay, do we have a student spotlight this evening? Okay. Public comment. Again, for those viewed at the beginning, I said, we accept public comments, but we do not engage in dialogue on that. That's great.
I understand. My name is Marie Caymans and I live in Sandisfield, Massachusetts. And one of the first comments I just wanted to say was under enrollment. Just so you know, the town of Sandisfield has voted to request that the Farmington River Regional School District School Committee drop an amendment to our regional school district between Otis and Sandisfield, whereby Sandisfield could withdraw from this. So if any of you know, like selectmen John Field, I would certainly take the opportunity to get more children from Sandisfield at Mount Everett or, I mean, the elementary school through Mount Everett. I can tell you where I live in, I mean, it's an inconvenience. I'm not going to say it's convenient for us who live in Sandisfield. But the reason that I chose New Marlboro over Otis was because of the length of the bus ride. And you do have an opportunity to get more students who would go through the system. Having said that, more importantly, my, my biggest thing I wanted to talk about happens to be under Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development. Middle school, as you know, this year has eighty minute class periods for math and English. And Jesse and I have talked about it. I probably talked to him a couple of times a week and he has been wonderful. But as a guardian to my great niece who's in eighth grade, I think it's important that the school committee is aware of the toll that that eighty minute takes on students when they're not allowed to take breaks or look at their grades. This or the stress that actually puts on the student. I had Kylie Love's school until this year. She is definitely stressed by those eighty minute periods. Having said that, Sandy Hubbard has been phenomenal and her staff in establishing a five oh four to eliminate some of this stress and to allow Kylie to get up and walk around. I took her to her pediatrician who was very strong in saying, these kids at this age have a an attention span tops of thirty minutes. So I would just like, and I know you can't answer me, but I think there needs to be a survey of parental and student input from those middle schoolers from sixth to eighth grade to see how they are tolerating these maths and English eighty minute class periods. Don't misunderstand, I know why we're doing it. I totally get it. I'm an extremely reasonable person. I know we have to catch up. I know we didn't do well on MCAS. But I think we need to also look at the emotional side for the student in making it a good experience for them. Now, it's not going to apply to Kylie next year. She'll be in high school and she won't have to do eighty minute class periods. But this was her first year and I just think it's important as her guardian to get input from parents and the students as to how they feel or felt about an eighty minute class period and sitting there for those eighty minutes. And I'm not trying to be mean. I just know the toll that it took on Kylie for eighth grade.
Of your time.
All right, I'm done.
Marie, I have one, just one request for you. Given the first item you brought up, can you email me? It's, it's the SBRA so that I can get some of that information regarding. I'd appreciate it and thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the public to speak? Okay, moving ahead. Business managers report, I see Chris is there.
Hard time, there we go. Okay, I'm sorry, I was having a hard time unmuting. Good evening, everyone. I have a couple of reports for you today and then I also have the insurance premium adjustment that we've been waiting for. So the first item I have is the warrant report. This basically.
Just so you know, it's six A, starting on six A.
Okay, so the warrant report we have, the first item is basically just made up of payroll taxes and Berkshire retirement. The next one, oh, is just general supplies, groundwork, sped expenses. The following one would be just, it's all transportation. The one on December twenty third, I'm sorry, November twenty third, I'm going back and forth. I have my notes on an Excel version here. Is payroll, November third is also payroll. And the last one is a P card warrant. That's basically the district credit card. People use that when they just need something quickly and they run like to the hardware store or something to buy, buy a needed supply or something. So you know, nothing really unusual in this batch of warrants, but I just wanted to present them to everyone. I don't know if anyone has any questions on them?
I'll take a motion first to approve the warrant report.
So moved.
Okay, so Dennis will say, and Carl will be the second. Questions, David? Second page, six C. No, we're not up to that yet.
Oh, so we're just.
We're on warrant.
I thought it was the.
We're on six A.
Right.
We're just on warrant report.
Right, well, I thought that was the same thing. All right, very well.
Anybody have any questions on the warrant report? All right, seeing none, we could take a vote on the warrant report. Nancy?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Yes.
And Sarah?
Yes.
All right, unanimous. All right, moving on. Chris, back to you.
Sure, okay. So next I have some budget transfers for your approval. A few times a year, we basically just go through the, the budget and the expense report and kind of just true up where we are versus where we thought we'd be. This is general cleanup as with most of the budget transfers we do for the newer members on the committee. I'll just kind of quickly explain that when we prepare the budget, it's basically right around now through the end of February. So a lot of times we expect expenses to go a certain way. You know, teacher salaries to be at a certain level, you know, et cetera, like that. And then we have adjustments where teachers retire, they're replaced with somebody at a different salary level. And so all of a sudden, that budget that we put together is off from where, you know, in that particular line from where we thought it would be. The same with inflationary items, quite honestly, where we've got crazy inflation this year and you know, it's hard to know that's going to happen a year, pretty much a year in advance. So a lot of times, again, we just move money around to cover, you know, say, shortfalls in the budget that we're experiencing in particular lines. There may be also items that we budgeted to have a person in the district. And then we ended up outsourcing that instead because we're unable to find an employee to work in the district. So just some, some examples of what these transfers are, but I can certainly answer any questions anyone might have.
All right. Do we have any questions there? David, you had a question or was it answered for you?
No, I think Chris answered it.
I have a question.
Okay, Carl?
Yeah, Chris, there's an item, behavior specialist fees bank, one hundred ninety two dollars and seventy eight cents. What, what is that?
So we had some bank fees in the month of November, if it was. Those were for checks that bounced, basically. The wire transfer had not arrived in time and, and so therefore, for lack of a better term, the checks bounced, they were covered by the bank, but a fee was charged for them. And so that's what that was. We obviously don't budget for that. So that is why I had to move some money in it just to cover it.
That, that, that must be more than one bounced check, correct?
It's, it's several bounce checks, yes.
In, in other words, that was a check written to somebody?
Yes. So what happens is we have accounts in different banks. Our accounts payable accounts are at East Hampton Savings. We also have a number of accounts at Berkshire Bank. And so what happens is when we run an expense warrant, the treasurer moves the money from the Berkshire Bank to the expense account at East Hampton Savings. In this particular case, the checks basically arrived before the wire transfer went through and, and so therefore we had that issue. As I said, the bank covered the checks, so we didn't get you know, people writing back saying, hey, we need this check done. But, but nevertheless, there was a fee charged for it, yes.
Hey, thank you. All right.
I have a follow up question to that. Has anybody thought to speak to the bank or banks about waiving those bank check fees and do we, do we do a significant amount of business with that bank who charged the fee?
We do, yes. I cannot speak with the bank. I'm not a signer on the account. I can certainly reach out to our treasurer to see if he did or can. Only the treasurer has access to the bank accounts.
Because, because I'm sure you know, it's, it's fairly common for banks to waive those fees for, for quote important depositors.
Yeah, I can reach out to him, sure.
Hey, thank you for reaching out for that. All right. All right, no further questions and we get the approval on motion to approve budget transfers. Let's start, Sarah?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, unanimous.
But I also have a question.
Oh.
That sounds like a very large fee. You know, I do a reasonable amount of banking and that is a very large bank fee. Okay.
He said it was multiple. It's not one fee.
It's not one fee?
Correct.
That's what, about, what is it, about three or what?
I'd have to actually check. I honestly don't know. It was multiple checks, so yes.
I think, you know, we approved it and it's probably about five of them.
So, Madam Chair, I see. So part of the role of the treasurer of the district is to take a look at things like that, the banking fees and to monitor. So let me just say that I have been in discussions with the treasurer and we have been making some decisions around banks that we will be using in the future, some of our practices. So there'll be an update on that. I also really would like to consider, and maybe we'll bring it to the finance, the policy committee around budget transfers, just from my experience and I was a school business official for thirteen years prior. I have never seen line by line cleanup that goes in front of a business meeting like this, especially if you're not transferring from major category to major category. So I think we should explore whether or not you're welcome to any line, but to me, there's a lot of movement that happens and I'm not sure that this is the best use of the committee's time in this particular forum. I don't know if this is.
I would suggest.
So I think we should revisit that policy.
Yeah, I think going to finance. Yeah, I think going to finance is a step one and presenting and then maybe policy or maybe jointly.
I'm just saying, if I'm gonna say I'm gonna hire twenty people, yes, that comes to this, but if I'm moving money from, you know. One account in the five thousand to the other for twenty.
The sixty-eight dollars, right.
Is not appropriate, I think, so I'm just gonna throw that out there, material, I should say.
With, if there's, unless there's an objection, I think it would be good if the finance committee seen no objection, that will take it up. Chris, I don't see anything ransom gifts, so we could move on to insurance, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. So I did yesterday afternoon receive the updated. Premium charges to increase the coverage in the buildings. Let's see. So the additional amount that, for, to cover the full amount of the building. The total would be eighty-three thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. Which is about roughly forty thousand dollars more than it was before. To increase it for the rest of this year, obviously the year is half done, would be twenty thousand two hundred and one dollars if it started today, which. Obviously, it wouldn't be able to start until at least tomorrow, so that amount will change slightly. But, you know, the, this, I guess this is a perfect example of one of those budget transfers, because this was obviously not budgeted for. But we've been actually working on this for several months, first getting the appraisal of the buildings. And then reaching out to our agent and waiting for the insurance companies to come back with quotes. So this is, you know, finally getting the numbers we've been looking for. And again, just because the coverage that we had, the existing coverage on the building was not sufficient. To, you know, to replace the building if something catastrophic happened, we reached out and got this price and. Personally, I recommend, even though it's kind of hard to, to swallow this much money. I, I think it's probably the prudent thing to do is to increase the insurance amount, but that is ultimately up to the school committee.
Right, uh, for discussion purposes, can we have a motion? To approve and then we can discuss it.
Motion to approve.
Okay, and that. All right.
That's a motion to approve what?
The full, the full worth of our building in terms of insurance.
Okay.
All right. So appropriate insurance coverage to the full value of the building, all right, we now get out to such.
Okay, Chris, I, I have two questions, you're talking about a doubling of the premium, correct?
That's correct, yes.
What's the amount of coverage under the policy we now have?
I'm, I'm gonna just round it thirty-two million dollars, it's thirty-two million dollars and, and, you know. A few hundred thousand or something, but around thirty-two million.
Oh, is it fair to say that the, um, the increased coverage would be, since the premium is double, the increased coverage would be about? Sixty-four million?
It's actually seventy-nine million dollars. So it's, it's more than double of the coverage. And I, I have to be honest, I can't. Profess to be an expert as to how insurance premiums are set, but it's possible there's a sliding scale that would, you know. Up to this much money, it, it, you know, it's this many, you know, thousands of dollars per million dollars of value. Then it changes when you hit a certain point, I got this yesterday afternoon, I can certainly reach out to the agent, you know, for some kind of guidelines on that.
Yeah, and, and I think one more question, has anybody determined that the, that this building? If there were a catastrophic loss, and in other words, if it had to be completely rebuilt, would, the cost would be seventy-nine million dollars? Has anyone determined that?
That was the replacement value of the appraisal we got done a couple of months ago.
Uh, just so that everybody knows, for the people who are new, this process began with the old school committee when. Chris first brought into our attention the idea that we were not fully covered. Just also to let you know, this only covers the main campus. Since we do not own either the Ed Ramon School or the New Ball Merrow School. So it's just covering the main campus, the first thing that had to be done is. We had to get a true value and that Chris was able, that's where the seventy-nine million for replacement. Came up and then we had asked him to get more than one bid in order to determine. What we should do. And this, have to say, is not particularly uncommon. That, you know, you think you're covered, especially with change in all the building costs. So that's how we've gotten to this point, and further questions?
Well, I, I have one more then, who, who did the, who, what person? Or company determined that the replacement, that this building could be replaced with seventy-nine million dollars?
I would have to look at my emails at the appraisal. I can see if I can find it quickly, it was in your meeting packet, I think last meeting, but. Let me see if I can find it quickly. All right, here it is. So it's HCA Asset Management was the company, this was recommended by our insurance agents, who to use for it.
Okay, where are they located?
I'm looking on it to see if I can find a location right now. Apparently, they didn't feel that was important enough to put on it. But one second, here I have. I have a website that was linked on it, I can just quickly check on that as well. I know the appraiser that came to us was based in Connecticut. The company's main headquarters is in Florida, but it, it, it's a national company, so as I said, the, the appraiser's office is in Connecticut.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, moving along, any other questions? All right, so the motion on the floor is to fully fund, that would be, give us the number again. The eighty, ninety, whatever it is, that million.
I guess, one second. Yeah, the premium is going to change slightly, the full amount is eighty-three thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. The additional amount as of today would be twenty thousand two hundred and one, it'll be, it'll be one day less. Tomorrow, so, you know, still around twenty thousand dollars for the rest of the year.
Chris, you have to give us, are you asking for, just for the rest of this year? What, what are you asking for?
At this point in time, I'm just asking for the rest of this year, and speaking with Scott from Wheeler and Taylor, he said that. We should probably stick with the same company we have for the remainder of this year. Rather than starting a new insurance policy to start, you know, in the middle of January. It would kind of be off year, so if we could then run this one through June thirtieth. And starting on July first, we could reach out to other vendors as well. You know, to see if we could get a better price, and that would certainly be what we would do. So, yeah, we're just looking really for the rest of.
Okay, Mark, can you amend your motion to address? That it would be the full value of our building to be replaced for the, the cost. Of the insurance for the rest of this year. And this year ends the end of June.
This, this.
Fiscally.
Fiscal, this.
Will you accept that?
Yes.
Okay, and then you'll take the second, so therefore what we are voting on is. The full insurance or the full replacement value of the main campus. Insurance to the end of June. Okay, Sarah.
Yes.
Carl. What'd you say?
No.
Okay, Kyle.
Yes.
David. Yes. Bonnie, yes, Art.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Nancy, yes.
Excuse me?
Nancy, yes.
Your hand was in front of you, all right, that's nine to one, go ahead and do it, and I would say. Get Scott Rode working on the bidding sooner rather than later.
Absolutely, yep, I can do that tomorrow.
And now that we pass it, I will tell you, when we were doing the asset for the roof. I did the walk on the roof and we were told at that point, we are lucky. Whatever what is, that a hurricane didn't come through here. Because the condition we were at, we would have really been at the, what do you call it, creek. So I'm glad we are doing this as of tomorrow, thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving ahead. This is with district member towns, update on regional school district planning board. Well, we've had our new members have the pleasure, I, I'm looking at your faces. Um, joining the regional planning board, any of the new members care to express? You don't have to.
You know, I guess I would just say, not being an expert in this at all. I'm sitting there saying this could blow up in their faces. Go on strike, the buildings could double the cost. So I'm just worried.
I'm sorry.
Um, they don't have any facts.
I'm just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but they don't really have that, so they have supposition and. You know, it's like backtracking every time you're at. They're like the cost of the building, it's not an actual cost. The, the plans, the, I mean, I was looking through the transportation thing and it, you know, I, I mean, it's just. You know, or the safety valve or the whole harmless, and it's like every time you ask them a question like, oh. Well, we don't have that information, so then they have to backtrack and do some more information, so they're putting out facts. But then every time somebody asks a pertinent question, the facts change, so I have kind of a little bit of issue with that. And because they're going to these town meetings and presenting like this is a done deal, and it's not, there's not a done deal.
I, I have just make one comment, dear, can, you were great to finance the mini meeting last Friday morning.
I was a little out of it, I have to tell you.
Even though your kids were sick. You really held your own and more than held your own and bringing up the issues. Over and over again, well, no, let me go to Carl, you, do you want to say anything?
No, and I don't think it's appropriate to discuss that in, in a school committee meeting, I think that a discussion should be. Our complaints or agreements should be discussed at the regional school district meetings, and there's subcommittees in that here. So I don't have anything to say.
Um, I just would.
Other than what I just said.
I, I would, right, I would just like to add, please, if you can, I'm not on finance. And I've been sitting in, you also can ask to have the, the video. So that at your leisure time, you can watch the subcommittee meetings. Because there's a lot that I totally do not understand in terms of the issue of the financing and. You know, it's important that we all are really aware, because it's not just the five of us who are on the committee. It really is for everyone to be brought up, up to date and. The biggest thing is we need people who will say. The question of are we, this, everything is still being worked based on the idea. Of a new building being done for a hundred million, and there's no way that that could happen. And then the latest is after we went from, which is critical, the Southern Berkshire was not. Going to be paying anything if we went along with this, that was the original. We would not pay anything, it's now up to twenty percent. Nancy.
Um, I have a question about, is there a place to send questions?
Yes.
Um, could we have a link sent to us?
Just go on to atetowns.org.
Contact us.
That's all you have to do and Jake does respond.
Great, thank you.
So please, with your questions, you know, get up at four AM and you're thinking of this question. Yes, so atetowns.org is the easiest way and it's very easy to navigate.
Thank you.
Beth, do you want to add anything at all? Is this still taking up so much of your time?
Uh, well, I think it's just, yes, it takes up a significant amount of time, there's, there's, I have to be in it. Would prefer to be independent, so I say that, I'm not sure sometimes, but there, you know, full planning board meetings during break before break. Break Friday mornings or a finance committee meetings, two and a half, three hours, so there is, you do need to do that. And really need to go through the reports and be present and ask questions and dig into it because. You know, there, there's just a ton of information and I think we all owe. Our families and, and our school community the time to do the diligence on this. Before we make decisions.
And also I hope that everyone will look, when you go to atetowns.org, you could call up. What they are proposing is the regional agreement for the eight towns. And I discovered last night that there have been changes since it was originally sent out to us. So now I've got to go back and read everything again and, and. Every town will have to put this on their warrant, so it's not an option. And therefore it really behooves us. To be totally aware of what this regional agreement is proposing. Um, yes, Dennis.
Yes, I, I tuned in to the last.
I saw you there.
Of the eight towns, and basically I had one question that I wanted to ask. And basically, the, the whole thing was done before they got through like half the material. That was on, on, on the agenda for that day, okay, and. I can understand Carl may not be in agreement that it's something we should talk about, but. One of the questions, the, the only question I had that I was gonna try to bring in front of that body was. How did we end up in a position, especially for our five towns that we represent? Of being in a position where there's not even been, as far as I can tell on any of the work that's been done. There's been no consideration about whether or not this building here should be the key building. Not building a new hundred million dollar building up in Great Barrier.
I can respond to that question.
Okay.
This was brought up when the original reports were done. And that was an item that came up. And can I say we are geographically undesirable in terms of moving everyone here? So it was very quickly eliminated that we become the center for the high school. So that, that was, and i- if you go back to the original reports, again, you can find it at the website. You will see how. I will not editorialize, but how, how this campus was not considered, Kim.
I think my biggest issue with the eight town things that we sit through is you're not taking in consideration, like existing. Positions, like how are we going to be funding three different superintendents at once? Three different students, head of students, student, whatever you want to call it. Contracts that are in existence, I mean, we have like a, whatever, we have a first year of a three-year transportation, that's just government news. Where, you know, it, it, it seems to me they're not taking, when they're figuring out all this stuff. Those things that are already in place.
Yeah, and, and one of the things I came. Yeah, and, and one of the things I came away with from yesterday's meeting is I have to tell you, I feel like the kids are the ones who are really. I won't say ignore it, could be really hurt in, in terms of this. According to what was introduced last night, there, if this all passes in the warrants in May, what will happen is there will be a transitional school committee, which will be named by the select boards. And um, gentleman from Stockbridge brought up the idea that should be done, that they would do it the way Sheffield does it was suggested, which is would be the person named to be on this interim board would be selected by a combination of the select board and the school committee members from that town. What happens is for those of you who are not there, what Kim brought up is we would have our school committee, Berkshire Hills would have its school committee, and there would be this interim school committee. A question was brought up, well, how are you going to fund all of this? And someone seems to think, there were people who seemed to think that there will be money from the state in order to fund this. Again, I am not going to editorialize here, but it's more um, looking at the impact. So again, you can also watch yesterday's meeting. The, my, and here I am editorializing. My sense was people were very much into operations and forgetting about the human beings involved in this. If you're, you're shaking your head. So please, I know, you know, you brought this up David, how much time will this takes? This is really so critical to our communities. I mean, it's, you know, it's, you know, some of our communities, not as much as others. But for Sheffield is a great deal of the economy, you know, related to our schools and why in this campus, the attraction of people trying to live here, despite the fact you can't find a house. So, you know, it, it really, to varying degrees, particularly for Sheffield and Marlboro, it's major economic impact. To some degree, more and more Egremont as well.
Monterey.
Really?
Monterey and Egremont were the two that were going to get affected the most from the report that they did financially from what they were used to.
No, Nancy, you've commented.
I was just going to say, I think a lot of the points are, are really clearly made. And I think that um, that the understanding is that there is a lot of, a lot of just mixed information, at least for the reci- for recipients, whether it's intended that way or not. And I think that, that I think that leads to the point from.
And I don't know between Kyle and Jim, the one place that there have not, there has not been a forum in any way.
That did get brought up.
Yeah, and, and it's been brought up several times. If, is there any way, you know, I don't know, like the firehouse or something that to have a, a forum?
Wasn't there a meeting clearing?
That meeting, they are not calling a community forum.
What was it?
Don't ask me, but they're not calling it a group. No, they, they call that um, a select board. So if, if you think it's appropriate, if you could think of anything, there is a desire to hold that forum. I'm sure you also received additional information related to other activities that will be continuing. And um, no, you haven't. And then tomorrow is the pleasure of the community outreach.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I will say if you, um, that I, I did put in my report, which I, I was giving verbally, but I did send to the school committee and will be posted tomorrow in the full packet. Um, I did include the information that I sent out um, as requested about the upcoming two opportunities here in the district. One, um, they are wanting to have elementary and middle school parent sessions on Tuesday, um, the 10th um, of January at three fifteen and the Google's locked on this campus. Um, with two, there's the Ed Visioning Team is, is leading these discussions. Some of you have participated in some of their other sessions. So that's going to be at three fifteen here. Um, and then there's a um, community conversation at the Sheffield Senior Center, which was originally scheduled for the 10th of December that um, is now going to take place um, on the 21st from nine AM to noon. So I included that.
They want you to stay for the whole.
Correct. So I, I did all the information that I've sent to the school committee, the community, um, and our faculty and staff. I put it in the report. Um, so, you know, it's, it's up to um, uh, whoever would like to participate in those opportunities.
Um, Chairman's Report, given the fact that we have a lot to um, deal with in terms of our transportation study. Um, originally, this is going to be our one minute go around introducing ourselves. Uh, I think let's postpone that to the, to the next meeting. I hope that more of you will get your bios. Thank you so much, Sarah. So if you, you know, get those more extensive, yes, Carl.
Uh, I just have a comment on, on that particular item. Um, in my view, uh, distributing the bios by email to more than a quarter of the school committee is a violation of the open meeting law. And I can cite the Attorney General's opinion on that. I won't take up time. I brought it, I brought it with me. But the fact is that the, the only things that are not considered to be deliberations are administrative matters, meaning timing of things, adjournments of things. If you post, and this is not Sarah's fault, but if you post uh, information about a person where that person expresses an opinion.
I've got, I've got your opinion on that and I could see where that could be an issue. I sent it as a bottle for a way to lay things out, but Carl, I think you're right on target with that. So we will, you have the model, you can move it ahead. Sarah, thank you for letting me violate the open meeting law. And um, we will save our introductions for the next time. Um, Superintendent's Report.
Sure. So um, I'll just take a few minutes. Um, I still would like to try to pick a date for our community conversation that the school committee um, wanted to do. We, we try to hold with media conversations with superintendent. Um, and the committee had talked about that and, and um, the topic would be on this um, regionalization effort um, per the group's thoughts. Um, I think it would be nice if we tried to host it in, you know, something like the um, auditorium and the tack pack or a place that's conversational in some way. I just need a date. It's, it's incredibly hard to find a date because there are so many.
I have suggested.
Go ahead.
You are the most difficult in terms of usillians. If you can put, send me some options and then I will send that, see if we can do a doodle and come up with a place that we.
So we need that.
I like that.
But we, we should do it in January. As we said, we were going to do it.
Yes.
Um, so um.
And this is different from the superintendent's round.
That's very different because that is an opportunity for um, you know, finance committee members select a right to, to get together and, and talk with each other and us all at once. It's a different form. Um, so uh.
A question.
So quick note on that. Could we make it at a time that might be more friendly for a larger attendance? Because like three fifteen or five o'clock.
Oh, I should have said from the get go that um, these have never started before six o'clock. They could go even seven because they're, they're family oriented. So people coming at home, their children.
Exactly.
Whatever.
Yeah, that's.
I think you'll give more people in.
They're, they're at least six, so we can be open to whatever time people think.
Okay.
Um, so I just wanted to share that as part of the um, ongoing equity work that Ms. Dawn and I are participating and the entire administrative team is working on that. But um, we are participating with the state and their Ready Foundation Learning Series. Um, we are now into our um, different strands that we're working on. Um, we are engaged in um, five two hour sessions. We've had two of them. Um, we are doing a book study and we're building a community of practice on how to be leaders in this work across the state. So that work has been um, really, really interesting. And we start to share a little bit of it with um, the rest of the administrative team today. Um, let me see. So I told you about the forums. I told you about.
And we're getting this. This was already posted.
Yes, I, I, I sent it to you. Um, so budget season, um, as we know, is officially underway. Um, today the lister was blowing up. That's a, a, across the state, all of the business managers. There's one for super kind, one for school business officials. And um, it was all a buzz about the early calculation showing the preliminary budget figures across the state. And the grave concern over the preliminary double digit percentages that everybody's facing and thinking how we can do this based on the inflationary costs of so many things. Um, I just wanted to note that we made a few changes to the budget calendar due to uh, some travel that we have and, and timing um, coming up. So it's posted all over the place with the changes in it.
And we received that email a couple of days ago. So if you look in your email, you'll see it if you haven't already.
Our internal budget meetings begin this week and the first meeting of the finance subcommittee will be on January 25th at five thirty PM. So that's the, the first one that those who are on the finance subcommittee should really be focusing on. Um, so, and the last thing I wanted to share is always good news when uh, we had repl- we had applied for the safety and supportive schools grant. Um, the top amount was, I think the reward was twenty thousand dollars to help further the work of our already established district wide safety team. And we were not successful in the first round, but on December 22nd, it's a little Christmas present. I was told that we were offered ten thousand dollars to um, participate uh, in, in the grant. So we're, um, we will be, we'll be doing that. So that's all I have um, for today.
Yes, Carl.
Good question. To be.
To be.
Not, you know, not the to be.
All right, get to, get to the point.
Um, you have students transferred out of district.
Yeah.
Elementary and Mount Everett for a total of thirty six and twenty three, fifty nine. Do you have the data for students transferred in?
Um, ouch, ouch. Uh, well, these are, this is in, I think, right? If, as the numbers go up and where they, where they came in on the front page.
You see plus ones, plus one.
See over to the right of, so you see the one, one column, you'll see pre K is up one. Do you see?
If that means students coming in from another district.
Could be students moving here.
That, so that was, but that wasn't my question. Uh, the question is, i- if we want to.
So choice, choice numbers, as I, I've said multiple times, settle in January. So um, there will be a more detailed report in the, in January about in and out of school choice.
Meaning during our next meeting, for our next meeting?
I'm hoping.
Okay.
We, we rely on, on that information to be done at the state level. So it's always January.
Thank you very much. Um, right. No report. Student services Sandy.
Good evening, Happy New Year. I wrote a nice report. Information in there. So unless there's any questions, I'll leave it at that because I think we have a really big report coming up.
Yes, thank you so much for being aware of that.
I have a quick question for Sandy. Uh, who is, and, and, and I best to verbally un, 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 unwarranted ignorance about this. Who is Dr. Hoff?
Dr. Steve Hoff is a consultant that works with us. He has a private practice. He's a psychologist. That's private practice in Great Barrington, Burnetum Psychology. And he's been consulting with us for years. And he works with a number of students doing counseling, but he also supports us in a variety of ways and on helping our mental health.
Does he spend time here?
Yes, Tuesdays.
Tuesdays.
Every Tuesday.
And he's wonderful. That's my editorial comment.
And, and students can make an appointment to meet.
He has, um, he has a case load. But he is now setting up this positive, this um, drop in center. Um, that's what he's working on right now. So um, you know, he has a set caseload. He consults on certain cases. And now he's going to have in this period of time each Tuesday where there's going to be a drop in.
A drop in meaning that students.
Can drop in to see him during a certain time during.
Okay. Sandy, thank you so much. All right, um, do you have anything um, uh, Wendy and them?
Um, so unfortunately she's a little under the weather, but um, there's going to, you know, as always, there's plenty to report on. But uh, you are, you all received um, some of our early college swag. Um, so everybody, um, we, we started to work on the banners. Um, there are hats, there are sweatshirts and um, uh, but more importantly, um, we're closing out of the first semester and um, we'll be celebrating those who have um, completed their first um, college credits. And then moving into, we're kind of in an intercession now. Um, and then we'll be moving to um, the offerings that I believe she shared um, the last time she was here for the spring. So it's um, it's been a, a really positive experience and she's getting feedback from the students and professors on, on how it's going. So I expect that you'll hear from some of them upcoming.
Even if in the interim, if he looks better written or force as the breeze, so we can have some feedback, that would be great. Whatever you think. It's in your.
Well, we'll see how, how, how it goes. But she, she likes to come and, and be present when she is feeling well. So I'm sure that she will do.
All right, now for the highlight, I think.
Sure. So um, we have uh, Rich Libree from um, some of the, the actual name. Right, come on up, we'll get you.
Yeah, I'm sharing my screen, but I need to get. Oh, sorry.
Actually, I'll stay, you know.
You can do it as long as that.
Okay, no, I'll stand up here.
Okay.
People can, can hear me and you could uh, bring that to uh, full screen.
Go ahead.
I just.
And I'll, I just in advance some of them.
This is a lot of information and I uh, like to make a motion for us to take a five minute recess back and take it's own.
Fair. Madam Chair.
He's waited a long time.
I'm fine. I'm fine with waiting.
Okay, then please do not discuss anything. Taking a private break. All right, we're back in session. And with that, I turn it over to our consultants. We're going to get on the subject that's been near and dear to our hearts for years.
Yeah, it's been.
He's going to help me here.
If you go, I think if you.
Review.
Up in the corner, you should have you that takes.
Oh, there it is. I'm not a natural.
Definitely not.
I am.
We started the slideshow, it'll probably give us full screen. Slideshow, there you go. He just uh, circle back.
On the slideshow down.
On the slideshow down. That enough?
That's fine.
It's good on the screen.
Yep, it's fine up there, okay.
I think I can advance it from here. Thank you very much. As some of you may know from the proposal that we sent in a while ago. My background is I was a former collaborative director before I retired, director of the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. I was there for a total of about thirty-five years. Left there for five years, came up here and was the director of Self-Works or Collaborative for five years before I was recruited back to Lower Pioneer Valley. During my interim there, we had occasion to look at school transportation and decided that it made more sense for us to own and operate our own buses on behalf of our school districts. And as their contracts came up for renewal, we gave a proposal to each of the school committees. And we were considered both less expensive and probably higher quality because we were controlled by each of the school committees. As you know, collaborative is controlled by each school committee. As such, you become very customer friendly when you work for school committees. And over course, for about an eight-year period, as these contracts came up for renewal, we grew the collaborative transportation business. We, we, we developed and constructed four bus depots across the county. Ran about sixty-five, seventy buses out of each, out of each facility. And grew to about two hundred and seventy. When I retired, we were running about two hundred and seventy-nine vehicles. Big buses, small buses and vans. We were the largest publicly owned school bus operation in the state. And we became a model for both the state legislature and for the Department of Ed with regard to running a cost-effective, efficient transportation operation. We were evaluated twice, once by the Kennedy Institute, UMass Boston, and once by the state legislature. Both evaluations said that we ran high-quality transportation. And our costs varied between twenty-four and twenty-six percent, less than the cost of comparable contracting. So that's a paradigm that, that I operate from. I've been doing consulting a lot in transportation for the last eleven or twelve years. Been all over the country, did districts as large as Los Angeles and Chicago. Did district of the smallest, Wenex, which runs three or four buses. And so anyway, that's the, that's the paradigm that I, that I agree. Having been here for five years, I know the area fairly well. And, and so it was not unknown to me to come in and, 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 and look at this. So having said that, the, the study was conducted for two reasons. One was to determine the cost effectiveness and efficiency of what you're currently doing. And secondly, to determine the feasibility of an alternative for the district. Either to own and operate your own school buses or contract, have the Lower Pioneer Valley come up and since you're an affiliate member to look at, they're running your transportation for you. We start, you know, in the, looking at the demographics of the, of the district, primarily with regard to population and enrollment. The reason we look at that is that we don't want to propose something based on the numbers that we have this year without knowing that those numbers will live in the future. And so in your case, you have slightly declining enrollment, even though your, your population is relatively stable the last few years. One of the things that I caution people is when you look at cost effectiveness and efficiency, it's not just the number of students on the bus. There are a lot of factors which, which will lead into determining whether transportation operation is either cost effective or efficient. And those include tier time. And what that means is the amount of time you have to transport students. If you're ru- running multiple tiers, it's the, it's the time between your bell schedules, basically. Typically, a tier time for your first tier or single-tier system is no more than sixty minutes a child should be on the bus. Now, that's maximum amount. That is a state, I won't say state law, but it is the, the past practice of what the state looks for. If you were a special needs student, anything beyond sixty minutes required parental approval from the I, through the IEP process. The other is that route time. Route time is the time from the depot to the time of the first stop. Depending on where the buses are parked, you have some, the route time is some driver time. Probably the most important thing is your student ride time. How long are your students actually riding the buses? And that determines, you know, the, the quality of the service that you provide. And quite frankly, the number of bus stops that you may have on, on a particular route. And then you have what's called your jethead time, and that's the time where students are not on a bus. From the depot to the first stop, at the end of the day, from the last school back to the depot. And so these are some of the terms that you see throughout the report. That's why we provide definitions right up front, so that we're, we're working from the same definition. We looked at your contractor rates. I apologize for this slide being so small, but it is the near in your, the packet for the slide, but it's also on page eight and nine of the report, which is probably easier to read. But the reason we put that in here is because it gives us the baseline for what your transportation budget is in twenty twenty-three. For the various cost categories that you have in your transportation contract. And the reason we do that is we have a baseline to compare what are alternatives and cost in relation to what you're currently paying under your current contract. We looked at your projected cost increases on your current contract. And as you well know, you have a, a new three-year contract with option years. The first cost was a hard swallow, I'm sure. And your subsequent costs are based on cola. When we did this, we used some of the figures that we had extracted at the time for what we thought cola would be. We're slightly lower than what, what cola looks like now. The, the year of labor statistics is not posted December yet, but it looks like through November that the average cola is, is bordering around seven point two, seven point three percent. Might go as high as seven point five by when December figures are factored. So we did this, I think, at six percent. So your cost increases in next year and the following year are going to be slightly higher. I'm confident able to watch what this slide indicates. We looked at your transportation budgets for year to year. And you can see what the, what the budget increases look like. There've been some relatively large increases. And the, the bottom line is that your budget has increased an average of almost eleven percent over the last six years. A relatively high increase comparatively speaking, both industry-wide and, and other school districts. And, and what we look at, if we compare that cost increase to the average budget increases for the district, those have averaged about, about two and a half percent. And so you can see that the, 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 what your transportation budget increases are increases at a faster rate that your budget increases are. We looked at your state aid and it does not include twenty-two, twenty-three. But typically, your state agent has been around eighty percent, in, at least in the low and mid seventies. It was ninety-six in twenty twenty-one, ninety-five percent in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. The Department of Ed has informed me as well as I think everybody else by now, not to expect that type of reimbursement again. The reason that it was ninety-five and ninety-six is that the legislature was flush with cash. They had a lot of stimulus money that they were wishing to spend to get money back in the school districts. The department has said to, it would be prudent to plan on eighty percent reimbursement going forward. We looked at your transportation versus your district budget, budgets. And it's a factor that we look at because one of the benchmarks that the state looks at and it's a benchmark that we look at when comparing contracts between school districts. What we find is that at some point, and at that some point, maybe next year or the year after, the continued increase in transportation as a percentage of your district budget are going to, are going to impact the district's ability to pay for educational services in the rest of your budget. Transportation is going to continue to take a bigger and bigger chunk of, of your, 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 your budget as a whole. Regardless of the, of the, of the reimbursement rate. We then looked at the, the metrics, what I call metrics of your current transportation system. And, you know, some of these that we, we look at include your average. Your, your, your averages with regard to your route length and your how your, your routes are scheduled, both in terms of your scheduled load and your actual load. And in your case, your, your scheduled load capacity is around eighty percent. Would mean that, that you schedule to fill eighty percent of your seats on all your buses. That's relatively high. Your actual load capacity, though, borders around sixty-five percent, which is not so high. And so what that means to us is that if you were to get up to the seventy-seven, which is.
You just repeat that one's last, what you just said, which capacity.
Okay, the scheduled load capacity is seventy-nine point nine percent or close to eighty percent. Which is, which is relatively good. What, when you look at the actual number of kids riding your buses, it's only sixty-five percent of, of the actual eligible kids that are riding. Which is relatively low. And so what that means is that if you wanted to fill seventy-five percent of your seats, actually, you would, oh, you would schedule higher. You would get a higher actual number of kids riding, and you probably could eliminate at least one bus and be able to do this. What that impacts is when you look at your average time per group, which right now is about twenty-eight minutes. If you were to eliminate a bus, your average route time would go up about thirty-two and a half minutes. So there would be some impact on route time for some students, depending on how the contractor reconfigures his routes and how he eliminates and where he puts the kids that he's eliminating them from one bus. So it would increase some route time and, and. But not to the extent that it would be onerous and not to the extent that you're getting up, you're bumping up against sixty minutes. So you look at it graphically, the left chart is your route time analysis. And so you look at the blue line and that's basically your, your route times for, for each route. The right time is your, your afternoon analysis. And again, you're, you're well under sixty minutes for most of your routes except one. You look at your loads and you look at the red line, the, your, the appropriate load. And by the way, when we go back to student loading, when you have a seventy-one passenger bus, doesn't mean you can put seventy-one kids on that bus, especially when you're talking high school and middle school students. You can't get three kids to a thirteen, thirteen-inch seats. And so for a seventy-one passenger bus, your maximum loading for high school and middle school kids is, is about forty-seven. What you're talking about is two per seat. On the elementary side, you can get three per seat, but on the middle school and, and high school side, you're, you're, you're good to get two. And our, our calculations take all of that into, into effect. But as you see, your, your load analysis is, is pretty well under your capacity. With the exception of two routes in the morning that are running at capacity. Probably the most important slide is your student's ride time. And what's important to note is that in the morning, I think it's eighty-nine percent of your students. Eighty-nine percent of your students are on the bus less than thirty minutes. And as you look at, and I'll say the word, as you look at the merger study going down the road, one of the things that you need to be aware of, and we certainly looked at a lot of options for them, was what does it do, what does the merger do to the right time for Southern Berkshire students? And this is the, this is the slide that, that gives you that, that information. And, and again, in the afternoon, ninety-two percent of your ride time is less than thirty minutes. One of the reasons that there's a difference is that you have a lot of kids that stay after school. So you have fewer riders in the afternoon than in the morning. But that gives, this gives you the distribution of, of the right times for all your students. And in the report, you'll actually see the worksheet that identifies each room independently in each, each room and what that right time and what that count is for each of the routes. So anyway, that's, that, that's what you're looking at with regard to your current situation. Now, we look at alternatives to contracting. You have two choices, basically. Because you're an affiliate member of Lower Pioneer Valley, you can request that the LPVAC come up here and assume your transportation operations. They may say yes, they may say no. I met with them several times. They were pretty non-committal, but they certainly said that they would consider it at the time if you decided to move in that direction. Or the alternative would be for the regional school district to own and operate your own, your own buses. Either way, there needs to be a facility from which to operate in the school district. And whether it's the LPVAC that comes in to operate it, or you do it yourself, you need a garage, a maintenance facility. You need parking for buses, vans, and for driving vehicles. And however, you're in a unique situation, you have a, a parking lot adjacent to the school. That's that direction, which is very much underutilized. And for the number of vehicles that park there, there is sufficient parking in the main parking lot for all of them. And plus more, more than, than park out there. In order to use that parking lot for school bus parking, you would need to have it relined for appropriate school bus spaces and for van parking, appropriate spaces. You would need driver parking designated for drivers and bus monitors. And you would need to include entry and exit directions in, in and out of that parking lot. You cannot need any additional handicap parking spaces because there are already enough designated out there. And that's what it looks like from the aerial views. I'm sure you, you're, you're aware of that, that parking lot probably better than I am. But for the general public, we did take pictures of it. And the other is that in addition to having a parking area, you need a, a place for your transportation management to work from. And again, adjacent to the parking lot, you have the old administrative building. Right now, the first floor is being used for storage. Matter of fact, the building is being used for storage with the exception of the hatchery that's in there. We, we looked at the building, we measured the space, we looked at a lot of the things with regard to it. And it certainly lends itself for a transportation office. Not only transportation offices, but bathrooms for drivers and staff. And a meeting room where drivers can, can meet or wait to be scheduled or you know, kitchen area for coffee and, and things of that nature, something you, you already own. And that can coexist with the hatchery. The problem would be all the stuff that's stored there would need to have be stored someplace else. You could probably leave the, the second floor storage, okay, but when we looked at it, it was packed with a lot of stuff up there. So anyways, between the parking lot that you already have, the building you already have, you've covered a lot of what you would need for infrastructure to do your own transportation or have the collaborative come up and, and do it. One of the options you have with regard to maintenance building is that you have a maintenance building on that side of the parking lot. That's the, the entrance, looking at it from the, from the entrance area. The issue with that building is the, the overhead doors are not large enough for buses and the bays are not deep enough to get a big bus in. Which means that you would have to add about two thousand square feet to that building, bringing it out this way towards the front. You'd have to change the entry to that, to that maintenance area. Bringing it out this way towards the front, you'd have to uh change the entry uh to that uh to that maintenance area. Uh take down the brush that's in uh in the parking lot uh and make a a a wired turn area for buses to be able to uh uh come in and out. Um so you again, you'd have to expand uh the building by about two thousand square feet. You need uh new larger overhead doors. Uh redesign the entry and exit driveways. Uh you'll need to staff up to provide materials and tools uh for. The a mechanic that you would have to hire uh to service your buses. Uh and you would need, uh at least our recommendation is an automatic school bus snow removal system. So that when your buses leave in the winter, the snow gets scraped off the top of the buses so that uh so that they're not going down the road. Uh you know, blowing snow onto onto cars that are behind them. This is what the facility would look like. It's a simulation. It's it's using one of the buildings that we 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 built at Laura Pioneer. Uh you would take the four bay doors, uh bring them into three bay doors. Uh and you have a simulated maintenance floor plan of of what you you would need if you renovated that building. The other option uh would be to construct a freestanding building uh over by the parking lot on that. Side of the building adjacent to the uh what I'd call the administration building. Uh the downside there is you would lose the uh the summer beach volleyball. Uh court, uh that would have to be relocated, uh and you probably would lose one, maybe two trees uh that are there. Uh but other than that, it would fit and it would be it would be appropriate uh to be in that area. The the question become with regard to fuel, uh our recommendation would be to use a a split fuel tank above ground fuel tank. Uh gasoline and and diesel. Uh we think you could relocate it. If you did the renovation, you could relocate it in in the the front tree belt. So that the buses could as they drive in to the parking lot, they could just swing by there and fuel on their way in or on their way out. Uh the caveat there is I understand that the other side of the fence is conservation property. Uh there may be a conservation issue as to how far away we have to be with with the fuel tank. Or what the Conservation Commission might require with regard to safeguards for above-ground tank. Uh but that's something that if you get down to that point. You your architect would investigate those things uh and uh your construction management person. Would walk through getting the necessary permits and with the with the appropriate uh boards. The other option would be to locate the uh the tank uh in the parking lot uh between uh just on the other side of the uh. Uh the admin what I'm calling administration building, there's free parking spots there, you can put the fuel tank there. Uh so that when buses pulled in or or pulled out, they could they could fuel from there. Uh one of the things that has come up since we did this study uh is that uh. It's uh it's more likely that electric buses uh two years from now will be appropriate. Uh for Southern Berkshire. Uh right now, they're not. Uh the reason being uh is that most of the electric buses have a hundred and twenty mile radius. Uh it becomes less than a hundred and twenty miles in the dead of winter. Uh and uh the recommendation from the factory is that you don't defeat your buses, your batteries more than eighty percent. And so that brings your hundred and twenty miles down to ninety-seven miles. Uh winter, uh when everything's running on those buses, it becomes less than that. Uh given the use that you have on a daily basis. Uh you can't count on getting buses recharged in the midday. Enough of a charge to make sure you've got the afternoon covered, much less any after-school athletics and field trips. So when we did the report, uh the available athletic buses uh were not uh sufficient uh for consideration here. Uh having said that, uh we're going to bid for a fleet of buses uh in a couple of months, which are a new type. I'll say a level three technology bus, uh which supposedly will provide a three hundred mile radius. Uh when we opened bids uh in probably in April, beginning of April. Uh we'll know one, whether that fact is true, we'll have a chance to evaluate those buses, uh and secondly, we'll know what the cost is. Right now, electric buses are running about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, about four times the cost of a diesel bus. The only way it makes sense right now for school districts to get involved with electric buses. Is with EPA or C and C C C uh grant funding. Uh and uh the EPA funded, uh I think five five grants out of, I don't know how many applications they had. Um um but uh there's a a new round of funding coming out in January. We'll know what the uh. What the priorities are for funding, we'll know what the new guidelines are and we'll move forward there. But as I said, if you get to that point, you have two years on your contract uh to work with anyways, if you have time. Uh and we'll know what the uh, uh you know, what electric buses could be and whether they're in fact appropriate uh here. Uh this is what the new maintenance facility would look like if you were to build a new one over on that side by the uh. By the uh admin building and again, a example for plan. That uh that fits the uh, you know, what you would uh what you would need. Uh we went through and got construction cost. We actually had the uh one of the contractors that built our our last uh facility. Uh update uh the uh the budget that we had for uh uh a uh facility that we built. Uh we built all that into the cost comparisons. Uh and uh when you look at your your current contractor's cost at five hundred dollar, five hundred eight dollars per bus per day. Uh and four forty-eight per van per day. Uh the LPPC cost uh this year is three fifty-seven seventy-nine per day and four twenty-four seventy-five per van. Your self-operated cost is approximately four hundred and one dollars and thirty-nine cents for either bus or van. Because we combined them and created an average cost. Uh the reason being is that we split the overhead over both of them uh simultaneously. Uh and you know, when you extrapolate that over what your budget is for uh based on, if you remember the slide with the small numbers. Uh our baseline, uh your cost savings for the having a collaborative come in is three hundred and seventy-three thousand and change. The first year, and that includes your capital cost uh input for your first year. So it's it's all all inclusive cost. Uh and the the future cost avoidance from goes up from fifteen point nine going forward. Because as you recall, uh your average cost increase for your bus contract uh is is about ten, ten or eleven percent uh per year. Uh collaborative cost increase from year to year is 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 under three percent. Uh and on the other hand, if you were to uh look and do it yourself. Uh your uh cost savings would be about four hundred and thirty-six thousand or a minus twenty percent in in savings. Yeah, and again, that's all inclusive, including your capital cost based on the numbers we have. The caution I would give uh is that uh when we've talked to people in the school construction industry. Deal is hard to get, it's deal takes a long time to get. And any of these uh costs uh with regard to the facility uh require steel infrastructure. Uh and so uh if you're going to move in that direction, you can't pull the trigger uh in year three of your contract. Uh you have to do this in year two to give yourself the time necessary to build the infrastructure that you need to to. To build to accommodate it all. Again, uh the summary, uh whether self-operated or the collaborative operated it, uh the district will need to construct the requisite facilities to both park and maintain. Uh that's a given. Uh and uh when you look at the the fact that you received ninety-five percent reimbursement uh last year. Uh and uh and approximately seventy-five percent of your eligible costs are out of district under uh circuit breaker. Uh. But DE Jesse has advised us that those won't go beyond eighty percent. Uh probably not, at least not in the foreseeable future, unless the legislature somehow uh is flush with cash again. Uh and the new legislature uh decides to pump more money uh into uh interstate aid. Uh I don't see that happening, at least not uh next year, uh at least not sufficient to to cover this. Uh and so when you look at the at eighty percent reimbursement. Uh your your range of savings uh in actual dollars the following year are between seventy-four thousand and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Uh because everyone that I talked to says, well, you're getting eighty percent or ninety percent reimbursement. Why do you care how much you spend in transportation? The reason you care is that every dollar you put in transportation in excess of what you need to put in is a dollar that you cannot put in the classroom. Regardless of 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 reimbursement. And so the extent that if you want to put. Oh, rephrase that. To the extent that four hundred and seventy thousand dollars is important to you in your budget for something in the classroom. Then it'd be who to think about changing from contracting to another method of providing transportation. Uh our recommendation would be to rebid your contract at the end of twenty twenty-three. Uh see what the market is at that point. Uh give your current contractor the opportunity to be reasonable uh with regard to a future contract. Uh see if we could entice uh other potential bidders to to bid on your contract. Uh by then, I would think that uh the merger study would would either be approved or not approved. Uh and ultimately, on a larger scale, it may make sense for Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire to cooperate. Uh in a more regional approach to transportation. I think it would be uh more cost-effective for both uh school districts that they were to cooperate and do something in that way. And there are vehicles by which you could do that. So but uh again, the recommendation would be in twenty twenty-three to to redo the contract. The IP's office, Inspector General's office allows you to rebid a current contract uh up to a year uh before the uh the it expires. Uh without any penalty uh and give the current contractor an opportunity to visit the numbers. Consider their cost and see if they want to make adjustments uh going forward. But if we give you, instead of looking at our projected coal increases over the next several years, it would give you an actual number. Actually compare the the cost differences to. That's it.
Okay, let's start with questions, Kim.
So when you're putting a estimated cost on these buses of five hundred four oh eight, what is going into that?
It's all inclusive. It includes the driver cost, driver wages, driver benefits, capital cost for the bus. Overhead for the contractor uh and uh fuel, primarily. Uh and testing, uh driver testing, CDL testing, uh all of the administrative cost. And a coordination cost to coordinate it all. It's an all-inclusive cost, so there's nothing in addition to that.
What about insurance?
Insurance is covered in there also, yeah.
Dennis.
Yeah, I I just happen to have this November. Edition of what was done, what you what you did. I don't know whether, did you?
Yeah, we did.
I mean, I I know it's got your company name on it, but but you. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
What are you referring to?
Yeah, and you'll see some of the data that's in that report is in this report.
I noticed some of the photos are saying.
Yeah, they would be. I hope so.
I just want to be clear about this, want to make sure I understand correctly. The first year's cost, does that include the capital costs, construction?
Yeah.
And all that and purchase of new buses and everything?
Yeah. Is amortized over twenty years. Uh I think we we picked a uh 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 I think we use a three percent fine tax of debt finance rate. Uh that's probably low today, uh given what the finance, what the government is doing with those prime interest rates and and and. Taxed in borrowing, but it does, it's it's as I said, it's uh it's amortized over over twenty years. The buses are amortized over a five-year lease lease purchase.
Okay, so well, that's the thing, it's amortized, but is that gonna be like a loan or are we gonna have to come up with the cash upfront?
It's a it's a lease purchase. You pay, the way we structured it is it's uh annual payments in advance. Which means you make your first payment upon delivery of the buses. You make an annual payment each year for the next four years, which means that you're actually only financing four of the five years of your of your lease purchase.
Right, Ben, I'm actually asking about the instructions for the building.
Okay, so it's it's twenty years, uh similar to similar to a bond. Uh if the uh if the district has bonding capability, you say the bond for it as opposed to going to the tax of jet market. And your bonding rate would probably be better than going for a tax of jet bond, you know. But uh what we did is because collaboratives cannot bond legally. Uh we went to the market and we borrowed through mass development, uh tax of gym financing. Yeah.
Kyle.
Um I was just a question about the possibility of electric buses. We were talking about the solar initiative, right? Would you be able to power those electric buses through whatever solar was implemented here to offset?
Here would be an alternative, uh if you were to get grant funding. Uh what we would recommend is you put a canopy out of the parking lot over all of your bu- buses and vans. And put a solar array on the canopy, uh and then uh have storage either underground or side storage. Or uh for electricity, so that you could power your buses uh and charge your buses through your solar array. Uh and when you're not charging, you would feed uh electricity back into the grid and get a credit on your electric bills. Uh but that becomes only feasible is if you can get a partner out there to to work with you uh grant wise. Uh and there is money available uh for for solar and for alternative fuel and for alternative uh. All different alternative fueling, uh but it depends on what's available at the time, should you decide to move in that direction. But that would be the Cadillac of 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 operations is to do it all through uh uh through a solar array.
Question in terms, at one point, I had a little of the palaver here. The gentleman who was in charge had worked at Pelosi's in Albany.
No, that was David Robbins.
That, okay. But he brought up way back when. The ability to have um a a computer routing system.
Yes.
Is that would be included?
Uh it is not included, but the computer routing system has already been purchased by the eight-pound. Boards, uh and it is available, the license is available to either Berkshire Hills. And or Southern Berkshire jointly to maintain that license. So they paid the upfront cost of ten thousand. I want to say ten thousand nine hundred dollars to buy the software. Uh and we use the software to do the routing that we we did. Uh and that software would be available to Southern Berkshire. I think the cost is around twenty-five hundred dollars a year to maintain the license.
To maintain.
Yes.
Okay. But we have it through June?
You have it through June. Yeah, I think so.
That's good to know, Kim.
I have another question in summary. Um it says, while the combined savings to the Southern Berkshire Regional School District appears to be significant.
Oh, sorry, I stopped sharing.
It's okay, I'll I'll do I'll do it here.
It says, because of the current amount of stated, the long-term cost avoidance twenty percent may not make the capital expenditure. And effort worthwhile. What do you mean by that?
That should, uh that's a judgment, uh and if you consider the reimbursement. Cost of eighty percent on whatever you decide to do. And you consider that your cost then become a rolling twenty percent from year to year to year. It's a judgment cost by this committee as to the value of that twenty percent in actual dollars uh with regard to to moving forward. Uh the and and that's why I put in the caveat. The caveat to that is when you take the reimbursement out of the mix. Uh and you look at transferring, let's just say around number four hundred thousand dollars from your transportation budget. To your high school budget, or whatever, however, wherever you need to spend it. You're still gonna get reimbursed on what you actually spend, uh but your reimbursement will be less because you're spending less. Uh and so the the balance becomes the uh the value of that twenty percent versus the capital cost. The the.
The building and.
The building, the the pain of of somebody. Time and the effort, uh the capital part, uh you know, the the sweat from from death on on getting this all done and putting it on on her plate. Uh to to get done uh and against, again, putting four hundred thousand dollars somewhere else in your budget. That's a judgment call that I can't, I can't make. I can just, I can just point it out.
The four hundred thousand is the first year, correct?
Correct.
Not the second.
The the second year, the the four hundred thousand, if you don't do anything, uh goes to higher than four hundred thousand by about. Three or four percent. And so the cost avoidance goes uh gets greater and greater as you go further and further. And you get further and further away from your initial investment to to get it done the first year. Eventually, you're going to get to the point where the. Eventually, you're going to get to the point where the collaborative is and your average cost savings long term are going to be between twenty four and twenty six percent. Compared to contracting, you're just not there in the first year because there's a capital investment necessary in year one.
Uh, okay, now. Do you really think, I know Beth had made outreach, I know, um to lower Pioneer Valley a number of years ago. Um, do we think there's real interest that they would come in? I don't like the smile.
If. How can I say this tactfully? Uh, if I were in your position.
Yes.
I would pick up the phone or I'd ask that, pick up the phone, call Roller Joy at LPBC and invite him to a meeting.
Okay, I like your thoughtful response.
The uh Berkshire Regional Planning Commission.
Mm-hmm.
Has projected and and they've been doing this for many years, for several decades. Uh, that the Southern Berkshire Regional School District is going to have the largest percentage decline. In student population of any of the school districts in uh in in the county. And given the the our aging demographic, so let's let's say, let's just assume. I mean, people may disagree with this, but let's assume that they're correct, that the six twenty five is going to be reduced to five hundred students. In twenty thirty, seven years from now. What does that do to your calculations?
Uh, it reduces the number of buses that you need. Uh, and reduces your transportation budget. The the real question is what it does to your educational service delivery model.
Right, so that's, but that's, that's not your, that's not within your purview here and talking about transportation.
But I will say this, transportation is a support service to the educational process. Whatever you decide to do for educational purposes, merger, no merger, length of the school day, length of the school year. You know, length of years, periods, what, you know, what whatever, uh you do those things for educational benefit of students. Transportation will accommodate that, uh because transportation is really a support service. Transportation should not be the deciding factor on what your educational program and what your service delivery model is going to look like. You know.
Yeah, and 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 I get that point. It makes sense, but let's say that. If there were five hundred students rather than six twenty five. And we decide to go with the option of running the, running the transportation system ourselves. Doesn't that the capital cost of building that? Facility and and doing all the other things that are necessary to do to put us in compliance with the law and the regulations. Doesn't that increase our per student cost of 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 education?
What it what it increases is your cost per day per bus. Because you're gonna run fewer buses and your capital is going to be distributed over a fewer but number of buses. But at a five hundred student enrollment, you're gonna run probably seventy five percent of the buses you're currently running. In order to get kids back and forth. The comparative cost of doing that to the contractor as opposed to doing it yourself is still gonna be a twenty percent differential.
Yeah, no, I I I understand, it's just, but but we have then made an investment. With a with a somewhat uncertain future, and I think it's fair to say.
Yes, yes, okay, yeah, yeah. And I'm I I'm first gonna say, the merger goes through. You may want to rethink how you're gonna do tran- transportation entirely.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and the re- the report for the planning commission points that out, that there are alternatives. If the merger is successful and there are alternatives in that report, if the merger is not successful, both for Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire.
Yeah.
And this is one of them that we mentioned in there, although it's just a lot more detail in your report uh to support the what ifs.
Yeah, I I I want to thank you for a very, I mean, a really professional uh. Uh, approach to this and a very understandable to us non-transportation professionals.
All right, thank you for saying that. Art, you're in the field, do you have any questions? Not at this time.
Uh, I've said to Beth, I'm back and forth on a turnpike a couple of times a week. You need me, she knows how to reach me. I'm in Westfield, I'm not far away. Uh, you know, I like the area, I'm invested in the area from my past, I I loved it here when I worked here. Uh, and.
Well, if you could take a couple of more minutes, because I just want to open it up and see if anybody has.
Absolutely.
Any ideas.
Just go back to your question just for a second. Uh, if you get to the point where your enrollment dropped to the five hundred level. You're probably seriously gonna be uh considering uh closing your outline schools. If if you do that, then your transportation becomes much more uh cost effective and efficient to begin with. You get rid of the long routes and uh the longest driver time.
So, so um. People who have the crystal ball, like the one I have under their desk, would take that as your suggestion that if we want to reduce our transportation cost now. We should.
I'm not recommending that. I'm just saying that a result of that type of low enrollment. Would be revisiting uh the viability of of keeping, you know, the 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 outline schools.
Mm-hmm.
Especially if the if the enrollment there is lower. You know, one of the issues you have here is that it was evident when we were at the town hall looking at that figure. People would move here and and your population would increase, but you've got no housing stock.
Exactly.
You've got no housing stock for people to buy and uh at at an affordable price. Uh, so, but that's that's a a demographic issue that's not, uh.
It's in the hallway. Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, I I I know it's it's here because I I looked at Sheffield in particular. Uh, when I went to town hall and looked at the records, uh the tax records for uh Messini and what his property values were. Uh, as a as an alternative to uh to constructing. Uh, if you decide to move in that direction, uh you negotiate uh an offer to him to to buy him out. Uh, and use it in and acquire his facility, uh. Whether he'd be interested in that or not, I don't know, but we certainly, we certainly went to the trouble to pull the documents.
Thank you.
And and do the research to see what a viable offer might be.
I'm going to open it up, I'm I'm cognizant of your time, but for any comments, discussion, thoughts. Oh, wow, we did, um, I I don't know, that's easy, perhaps.
I I did.
Oh, yes.
You may not have the answer, but that's okay. Um, regarding his question on, you know, the full conversion of solar, constructing everything. Uh, if we have diesel buses, what's the fees in terms from, you know, being somewhat more environmentally friendly? But not going to the big Cadillac solar feasibility of converting to, say, biodiesel, for example.
Mm-hmm. Uh, if you're going to not go electric. I would suggest that you investigate propane as an alternative. One of the reasons propane is clean, the other is that it's fundable through the EPA and CEC grants. Uh, to help you buy them, and a propane bus is about five thousand dollars more than a diesel bus. So, uh, right now people are buying gasoline buses uh to get away from the high cost of of diesel buses. As an alternative, uh the other thing with regard to buses right now, uh is that any bus that you want to buy. The wait time is seven to eight months for a new bike. Uh, an electric bus, you're probably looking at a year uh before delivery. Uh, the the infrastructure for building buses is not sufficient for the demand that's that's coming. Uh, as an example, uh New York State has mandated that uh uh nothing other than an alternative fuel bus can be sold in New York. Uh, starting in twenty twenty seven, I think. Uh, there's not enough buses in the country, there's not enough capacity of of the uh the factories to fulfill that even for New York. Much less California or or any other state, so, but there's going to be an increasing demand for alternative fuel ve- uh vehicles. And the other uh is that uh you if you go with alternative fuel, you have to uh hire a mechanic uh who is fully trained. Uh, with regard to either electric or or propane buses. It's a whole different technology uh than uh than is for uh uh gas and diesel buses. It's not to say they can't do it, I'm just saying is it it's just the uh one of the factors that need to be considered when you, when you make the decision. If if and when you make the decision.
Yeah, I second everything Paul said about thanking you. Um, this has been such an issue for us in the negotiations of these contracts. We we feel like we're being held by the short ones. And we're in a point where in order to do something right for our communities. I think we need to take a very hard look at this. Would it be appropriate that we think? That we refer this to buildings, grounds and transportation for small work? I mean, even though it's. Time off, we need to start acting.
Right, it's a combination, I think, of finance, you know, when you're thinking about overall budgetary structure. I mean, I think there's no harm in at least exploring rebidding, right? I mean, that's that's just me and uh not in. Something we should.
Does the committee have a a transportation subcommittee?
Yes, yeah, buildings, yeah. So, what the.
Yeah, okay.
I I I have just one quick question. I I haven't, I don't, I I don't know the led- the legis- the the legislative setup for school transportation. But I assume that any cutting back. Let's say, as as a as a cost savings measure, cutting back on the provision of bus service. To students would require legislative action.
No.
No?
No, uh, the IG's office has a uh has a uh a rule of thumb. You can reduce your bus contract or increase your bus contract by plus twenty five percent or minus twenty five percent without having to rebid your contract.
So, is that an avenue that you think is worth exploring?
Uh, I had talked to your business manager a month ago. Uh, told him that uh we would be recommending in our report that you could eliminate one bus. Uh, I don't know whether he uh included that in the budget or not. Uh, or whether he was just gonna hold it in advance until the committee decided what they wanted to do and uh.
But we could do that, the district, the district could do that on its own.
District can do that on its own, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you were the award, this 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 committee is the awarding authority for your school transportation contract. The law, being chapter thirty B of Mass General Law, allows you to negotiate with your low bidder. Uh, which in this case you had only one bidder.
Correct.
So you can negotiate with your current contractor within the parameter of plus twenty five percent or minus twenty five percent of of the the cost of the contract. Without having to rebid it. If you were good to go to five hundred students next year, then you might be bumping up against that twenty five percent.
Five percent, right. But within that twenty five percent plus or minus per those parameters. We we the school committee could make that decision and renegotiate the contract with Messini.
Correct.
On that basis.
You can actually invite the your your contractor in tomorrow and say, you know, we can't afford this going into next year. What can you do to reduce the cost? My guess uh is that there are things in his contract, or now your contract. That could be negotiated in order to reduce the cost per day per bus. I can't say what they are because I don't know what he included, but typically, you know, we do those kinds of negotiations all the time. Uh, and what we do is we sit down with the contractor, if he's amenable, he may not be amenable, he may say, hey, that's my price and that's my price. Uh, and that's my contract. Uh, if he's at all customer friendly, and in your case, you've had a contractor who's been here for probably forty years or fifty years. A family operated business, probably a taxpayer in town or at least one of the towns. Uh, and he may be amenable to sitting down uh and opening his books and say, look. If we were to change the insurance requirement, or if we were to eliminate or reduce the performance bond, or we were to. Uh, allow us to use a couple of older buses as opposed to having to buy new buses in year two or year three. There are things that you can talk about to see uh if they impact on the cost per day per bus in order for you to reduce your cost. Uh, and uh and. And so you you can do that.
Yeah, but is it, is it, isn't he, uh he, Messini, you call it a he. Uh, but is it, is it Messini sitting in in a in a position that's. More that's favorable to to that company since it here, he really has no competition.
You've got it.
Well, my 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 first, my first comment to Chris when he called me. Was, why did you ever sign that contract? Uh, now, I understand that you were under the gun timeline, you had no choice. Uh, but as I said to Chris, I said, you should have called me six months earlier. Uh, you know, where we could have, we might have been able to help with that, but I have no understanding of why you're you saw a twenty nine point. Eight, nine percent increase the first year of a new contract. I have no idea uh why, why, what's built into that number, you know.
Mindful of the time, your time and everyone's, I'd like to suggest maybe, is this inappropriate? Or perhaps having an ad hoc committee just for this overall issue? Because there may be people on finance or building, I don't want this to die.
We we commissioned this as a result of the three or four.
Is anyone have a reaction to my suggestion?
Instead of creating an ad hoc committee, why don't we just set up joint meetings between finance and building grounds and tech? To work together to resolve the issue and get.
That's another, that that's gonna make it, put us in a situation where it's a whole school committee. But I think either way, I think we've got to move ahead, so, yeah. Um, would finance and buildings and grounds be, we've done this before, be amenable to a joint meeting?
So if you look at the way we restructured.
Yes.
Subcommittees, right?
Mm-hmm.
Buildings and grounds is almost like an ad hoc section of.
In that case, let's say that we will do.
We will.
It's a bit of.
As we go through the budget.
That the there will be a joint meeting of finance and buildings and grounds to address this, look at it and. Um, suggest next steps for us. Everybody's amenable to that? No, Dennis is not.
Well, there's a conflict of interest that exists. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah. All right.
I I just excuse myself.
Right, so we'll have a joint meeting and uh we will have to have the finance committee chair, chair of the whole, the event.
That's you.
Yes, no, that's not me.
Okay, right. You don't own a bus company that would not aware. Okay.
Again, it's going to be the administration proposing next steps, so it's based on the information report, so you don't have to worry about it.
Okay, and but I really think it's important that minus the conflict of interest person that we move ahead. We might have additional questions, et cetera, okay? So, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. I do have one question for the committee.
Yes.
Uh, this is now a public document.
Yes.
Uh, since it's been discussed at a school committee meeting.
Mm-hmm.
What, could I have your permission to share it with Lower Pioneer Valley Collaborative since their mention? I did not do that up to now because it's a privilege to to you.
Uh, do we have any objection to that?
Why don't we have a motion?
We have, we now have a motion, Paul, we have a second.
My second.
Okay, any um any, since we're all ten here, any objection? Good.
Thank you.
Yes.
It'll make it'll make life easier for everybody.
Uh, yes, considering, great, it might be very nice to have friends who are, you know, with response.
And if Roland is invited, at least you'll know what it's about.
Exactly, can you tell me his name again, Roland?
Joel, J O Y A L.
Will, Bonnie, will the record reflect that that motion to allow? Them to 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 share the report with the Pioneer Valley Collaborative.
That was your motion.
Right, that it was, that it was.
Unanimously, thank you for the. Oh, okay. Thank you again.
And again, if you have questions, bundle them to Beth, she knows how to reach me. And we're happy to uh to answer questions uh to the best that we can, and and I'll and I'll tell you, we collected an awful lot of data.
Yeah, I have one question.
Yeah.
Is it possible the two charts that are are done in six point font could be done in a larger?
They're 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 more readable in the report than they are on the uh on the slide presentation.
All right. Given the time.
I move we adjourn.
Well, I want to see if there's anything pressing of of the items that exist. Any committees meant that have to report to us? I think the other items we can postpone to the next meeting.
You don't want to do the annual audit report?
That's right, that's already listed as a future item. I thank you all for respecting each other and times limits, et cetera. Appreciate it. And I think it's a good start for twenty-three, if we can pass our folders on to Beth and Deanna. And with that, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, we have the motion to adjourn in twenty seconds. Okay, Sarah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, me, yes.
Yes.
Yes, Kim. We're adjourned. Thank you all so much. Folders for you.